All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to work. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're gonna do things a little differently tonight. The board's down here because we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a member of the project team zoom in and there's gonna be a presentation. We're gonna share the Zoom screen if, hopefully that all works out. And, you know, we'll talk about this a little bit. We'll get public comment and then, you know, the board will discuss a little bit and then we'll, you know, get on with the meeting. But if you, Jeff, do you wanna read the notice of public hearing?
Please take notice that the Town Board of the Town of Cornwall will hold a public hearing on the 17th of January 2023 at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Cornwall, New York, to receive oral and written comments from the public on the Town of Cornwall's application for funding under the Restore New York grant program. If awarded, the said funding will be used for alterations and additions to certain real property located at 317 Main Street, Cornwall, New York, to transform the currently vacant structure of the property from a former automobile sales and service station to a boutique hotel. In addition, the funding will be used to develop the real property located at 325 Main Street, Cornwall, New York, for parking facilities which may be leased to the town. The Town of Cornwall Planning Board is currently reviewing an application by Two Girls and One Boy Holdings LLC for an amended site plan and special permit for a, special, for a hotel for 317 Main Street. As required under the Restore New York program, the property assessment list is published below.
There's the, so I'm gonna share my screen here. So just, I think it's a good opportunity to show the public how to access documents for Town Board meetings. So if you're looking to get the information for a Town Board meeting, we have a requirement that has been in place since November 20, I think it's either November, December of 2021, where the Town Board has to post documents that are being considered by the board within a certain period of time. Documents that are still being considered can be posted the day of, but we, so in terms of accessing this, we always, Denise, who is my admin, special assistant, usually 24 to 48 hours, sometimes, you know, much further in advance, she will go onto this, which is the website. She'll go under here and the public can do the same thing. So they click on the agenda, minutes, and you're gonna come down here and this is here all the time. We don't change it. We've been doing this since, since I took office. You go down here to click on the agenda, click on Town Board, and then you're gonna come down here. And I know this is, but this is, you know, there's a lot of information to manage here, so, but you just follow the steps. Then you click on the year, 2023. And as you can see, so prior to the weekend, we put out the initial package of information, which was all the stuff we had ready to go at the time. And then we were still working on the Restore New York application. We were still having stuff that was coming in as far as the pieces. So last night, that got posted. And so this is the public hearing package. It's right here, labeled. And you can find this here before every meeting, all the time. It doesn't go anywhere. We've been doing this for a year. And so you click on this, and so we're now gonna share, this is the screen. We're gonna pull this up. And so this is, let me move this here. I'm just gonna hide Steve here for a little bit. Okay. So I'm gonna go through the parts that the town has done and then I'm gonna, you know, turn this over to the project team. But the letter of intent, this was submitted back in November and this just preserved the town's right to submit this grant. It didn't bind the town to anything. It just allowed us to preserve our right to submit it a later date. And so this was submitted to Empire State Development, to our region. And at the, so this, just go up here a little bit. Sorry, move Steve around here. Okay, so, so board members, you should have this in your package. All right, so here's the letter of intent. So basically, this had to, this basically gave the name of the project, the overall project cost, the Restore New York request, which would be state funding. This is not Cornwall taxpayer, or rather, this is not tax levy money that the town levied for that was on your tax bill last week, that we would be contributing to the project. This is money that the state of New York, through its economic development arm, uses for these types of grant programs. So if Cornwall doesn't get this, this money, another municipality will. It's just, you know, if you don't apply for things, you don't get them. It's got the name of the development company, a brief project description. And, you know, as you're aware, this is also before the planning board right now as well. And that's been, for at least a couple of months, been before the planning board. So that was the letter of intent. We've got the notice of public hearing. This, part of the requirement for the grant application, this had to be either published three consecutive days in a daily or three consecutive weeks in a weekly. We, this is actually in two different papers. So we met the meeting, the notice requirements, by doing three consecutive days in the time travel record, but we also put it in the local as well because Cornwall residents tend to read the local. So it should also be, I think it should have appeared in this week, or it will be appearing in this week's local again, but, so let me go down here. So that's the notice of public hearing. And that had to have, this is all the information that was in there. And it had to give the property assessment list and what type of square footage, the use of the funds, the type of work. This was all in the public notice that was in the paper. So next, then we have, this next, this is an email coming back from Empire State Development. They basically notified us that our project is eligible for this initiative. So we had to submit the letter of intent. They reviewed it. They looked into it and then we got an email back that we then followed up with a, with a phone call. So our project is eligible for the town to apply for this funding, yes. So, and the application deadline is January 27th at 3:00 PM. The grant gets submitted via the Consolidated Funding Application, which is an online portal, but there's a bunch of other documents that have to be submitted that are, you know, sign offs, the Town Board resolution. I mean, we'll get into more of that as we go on here. That's just the email there. All right, so I'm gonna let Keith and Bart and his team talk about the project a little bit here, 'cause I think that would be, is that gonna be you, Bart, or Keith?
I think it's me.
Okay, Bart.
Is, uh, is there some way to control the slides?
Uh, yeah, it's me. I got, okay, yeah.
And where, where should I, I guess, public hearing facing the audience?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you to the board for sending in the notice of intent back in November. We're here tonight to talk about the project as a prerequisite to the application, which is due January 27th. The Restore New York program was initiated in July. Governor Holtschul announced $250 million of funding. They did a first round this fall and awarded $102 million to approximately 64 projects. And this is the second round. And the purpose of the program, of course, is to generate economic development in our older communities by repurposing vacant and derelict structures. And we think we have one which is a good candidate, of course. And so many of you know the Bernaker Dodge facility, or formerly known Bernaker Dodge, at 317 Main Street. And this property was purchased by Two Girls One Boy Holdings LLC a couple of years ago, and I represent them. I also represent EMP Holdings LLC, which owns 325 Main Street. For you, those of you who don't know the numbers, that is directly adjacent and it was formerly the law offices of Charles Obramsky. It's a 1970s raised ranch. The subject property is from the 1800s. It's been improved. A second slide is a sandborne map, first one from 1897 and the other side from 1932. You can see it in red and you can see the improvements. I don't know what the 1890, 1887 structures are, but the 1932 has been verified as a gas station in front with some type of residential structures in the back. So as most places which were a gas station at one point in time, this property had some contamination and Two Girls One Boy Holdings LLC had the opportunity to remediate that and have the spill closed. So currently, in terms of taxes, 'cause a lot of this is about economic development for the community, is, our current assessment is $333,000 and we have an equalization rate of approximately 75%, which means the fair market value as per the town assessor is $441,000, four, six hundred. We're projecting in a few years for that assessment to be $6 million with a fair market value of approximately $8 million. So what we're, I went through the town's website and pulled the tax rates and my quick calculation says the current taxes generated by the site are $12,746 and we're projecting $229,521 once a $6 million assessment is placed on that. That number, that $8 million fair market value is about what we're projecting for construction costs. So other economic impacts, of course, are, besides property or sales tax, hotels have additional sale tax above the standards. So in our area, New York State has 4%, Orange County has 3.75% and the local portion is .38%. And then you have a hotel occupancy tax of 5%. So that's 13.13% of revenue coming out of the rooms. We're projecting $3 million in revenue at the rooms when we start to get into year three.
Real quick on that, so something that the board is aware of, that town's looking at is, we may be looking to impose our own local short-term rental hotel tax, which would be on top of this. So you could tack on another 4% of whatever the room sales are, do the math and that's an additional amount that the Town of Cornwall would bring in. So that's, that's an option that we have, should the New York State Legislature, the Assembly in the Senate, they, you know, should they get that passed and the governor sign it, we could impose our own, you know, like, you know, Orange County has a hotel occupancy tax, we could have our own in the Town of Cornwall. Other municipalities have been doing it. So we do have that option, should the board choose to act on it, but that is an option we have.
And that would look like another $125,000 in sales tax revenue.
That would just come straight to us, town, yes.
So of course, the property tax levy would go straight to the town and then the .38% currently, and then if there was an additional tax, that would also go right to the town. Food and beverage, we are estimating about $1 million when it's annualized. So that would be another $81,000. So our total sales tax is $475,000 projected. And these are my estimates from feasibility study, which we had done. So I did, the next slide is really just to show those numbers together, which is not including any local hotel tax, just over $700,000. Property tax, of course, is a considerable jump from 12,746 to 229,521. Our next slides are, really wanna show, well, this, this one, real quickly. Part of why New York State is investing in the communities is because when you take a blighted structure and you put something which is bringing in revenue versus taking away ambiance, there tends to be a multiplier effect. I looked through a bunch of different studies and, and this was an easy number to, a professor from Cornell University School of Hotel Administration estimates approximate double of what your income is in a hotel is what you produce in a multiplier effect, meaning hotel buys food, sells food. So the additional, the, the guests who stay there, they buy additional services in the community, they go out to dinner, the, the hotel buys things to service the guests, all of that is in the range of twice what the income of, of the hotel. So in terms of general economic input impact, and that's from various studies, but, and not a precise number and varies by hotel. That's just something I found, which I thought was helpful in identifying. So I, I pulled in all Google Maps. For those of you who were here in 2009, more or less, it was a Dodge dealership and looked very different than it does today. The structure doesn't look different, but it was, you know, it had activity. And, you know, we're seeing on a nationwide basis, car sellers going out to, out of downtowns and into different places and these type of properties being redeveloped. But, so I wanted to just show it as it was for a good period of time. I think the next slide puts us into some of the, you know, we had, we brought a drone in a couple of years ago and, and took some, some shots. This one is from Clinton Street, as you're looking towards the back of 317 Main Street there. And then this property here with the, the raised ranch is 325 Main Street. And this area is where we're projecting to do parking for the town. And so one of the things with Main Street being an older community is many of the buildings don't have their own parking and it's a little bit more difficult for them to rent and for the community to be as vibrant as it can. And so that's a piece of this puzzle that in return for the town helping us with this, getting some grant money for the project, we're gonna develop this parking and have it be no cost to the town and to the residents for using it. So you can kinda see that there. I have a copy of the site plan as well to show you. So the next view is just from the drone, just kinda puts you in place. It's a beautiful area. I mean, you can see the, of course, you can see the bridge and Storm King and, you know, the Mighty Hudson, but that is from just above the site and it helps give you a little context. Sure, most of you know it better than I do, anyway. So directly across the street from the subject property, just to show you how kinda cheap and jow the existing structures are and, and why I think we need, why I think parking would be a benefit to the community. You really have a fair amount of places here which aren't properly, which don't have parking to today's standards. The next one we have is just showing the front of the structure and the lay of the land. Just, you know, this is a drive going through there, going out to that house and the same one kind of over there. It just gives you an idea of, of the circulation patterns which have existed for a long time and which we hope will continue to exist with the hotel. So this is a copy of a plan showing parking on 325 and we're hoping to develop approximately nerd spaces as town parking as part of receiving this grant money. And so you can see the neighboring property fiddlesticks here and you can see the, the hotel location over there and then the proposed parking. The next one, of course, is an early site plan that was developed, which is, we're hoping to further address the, the planning board's concerns. But you can see that we're using the existing foundation in large part. We have in front a patio and sculpture garden facing the street and we've done some landscaping and screening facing the back and we've fit about as much parking as you can on, on this lot to service the hotel. I think the next slide we have coming up is the inside of the structure in 2020, just to kinda give you an idea where, what it looks like today. There's a little bit more rain in there today. And this is after we completed our environmental remediation and pretty much as it stands today with, with hope to be redeveloped. And then the last slide I have is a rendering, which is still a work in progress of, of a proposed hotel on the location, showing it in context with the neighboring structures which have been simulated in place. So really, the purpose of tonight is for the board to hear the comments of the public and hopefully give me an opportunity to address those so that they can then have the opportunity to vote on whether or not this is an application they wanna pursue, so.
Yeah. So I think we also have Steve Denzmore here as part of the project team. He can probably answer questions about the submission process and maybe about Restore New York. Project team's here, the Town Board is here, obviously, to answer questions about this as it relates to the town. We also happen to have our planning board attorney here tonight as well, so I guess that was a good timing. Maybe or maybe not.
Oh, always a question.
So I guess let's open this up to the public. If there's any, yes, Nancy.
Nancy Bryan. First, I wanna, my, I'm quite, I was quite bothered the fact that the documents for this public hearing were not available well in advance. For something of this magnitude, these documents should have been available to the public a, a good week ago, okay? And it was not. I shouldn't have to dig around to find information and then all of a sudden, there's a multi-page document with renderings in charge. It's lovely, thank you. It needed to be available to all of us easily, well in advance of tonight. The three, four, or five stories, I am adamant that this does not fit in with Cornwall and with Main Street. I think redeveloping this property is lovely. There is nothing in this town that's over three stories. So to say that you would put up a four or five-story hotel does not fit in with the character of this community at all. And that bothers me, okay? I think I need clarification because I thought I read in some of the documents that the developers would be leasing the property back to the town for parking and that's not what you said. So I, that might have been my misinterpretation. But, so the town applies for a grant which benefits the business, which is fine, because we certainly should be revitalizing this building, but then is it being leased back to the town for parking?
So there's, there's two parcels. 317 Main Street, which is where the hotel is.
Yeah, and 325, which would be leased back to the town?
So the 325 parking, which is to be developed, was gonna be leased back to the town at the house.
Okay. But leased to the town for no cost?
Yes.
Okay, so not like a dollar and, you know, whatever. I mean, I know you have a dollar or whatever illegally.
Attorney sometimes has a dollar as consideration.
Okay. The other thing that I wanna make you aware of, okay, and the board knows where I, I sit lots of times with businesses on Main Street, parking at 325 Main Street will not benefit all of Main Street and it certainly is not gonna benefit the businesses from middle of Main Street down to Willow Avenue. It's not gonna benefit them at all. And it would probably be good if your group or the board solicited opinions and surveyed the actual business owners that are in that area down there, because I can tell you for a fact, the opinion is it will not benefit them, okay? It might be good if, if the public also saw your studies for your soil remediation and knowing that everything was approved, that everything's good. There was gasoline pumping well into the eighties there. It wasn't just a short period of time, okay? And so I'm not saying you didn't do all the remediation, but I think that those documents should be made public as well with it showing the public that there is no more contamination on that site, because that would be a concern, that we're gonna build a hotel on a site that possibly might be contaminated. Has there been input from the fire department since the beginning of this project as far as what they think, their opinion of this? Have we solicited them and sat down with them and their officers to find out what their opinion is of this project? And then when does this, where does this sit with the planning board?
So in fact, a lot of your questions are planning board related, that are not necessarily tied. So I, I think it's important to say this is actually two different, just because we applied for this and we get awarded, ESD will not give a dollar of money to the town or anyone until it gets a planning board approval and it gets.
No, no, I get that.
So I think as far as a lot of those questions you ask, those are currently being dealt with through the planning board process and they're better equipped to handle, you know, we have an engineer, we have a planner, we have a planning board attorney, we have traffic consultants, and that's where a lot of that is gonna take place. I mean, I would sort of put that to Dominic, I mean, if that's right, I mean, that's where a lot of those concerns are gonna be, like, the planning board will take some of those on. Yeah.
The application has been made to the planning board. There's been two appearances before the planning board. The planning board meetings are open to the public. There will certainly come a point where there will be a public hearing before the planning board, where the planning board will welcome comments from the public. Of course, you can submit any written comments that you want at this point to the planning board and they will take them into consideration as well. I would encourage you to address these comments directly to the planning board that relate to the nature and scope of the overall development. The supervisor's correct. This particular public hearing is in connection with applying for a potential grant, which may or may not be awarded, which would help offset the cost of redevelopment of the site. It's not in connection with the amount of parking on the site or whether or not the, the building should be a certain height or.
That involves with you guys, yeah.
That, that's correct. Those are all, to some extent, you know, allowed uses within the zone, but that's something that the planning board's currently reviewing.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And I would say, I, I would have much preferred to have everything available earlier. We're just working with the constraints of the application and this has been an interim process, so I apologize for having materials just available just before the meeting.
When do you involve the fire department in all of this?
We are trying to meet with them actually this week. We've been trying to get that arranged for a while.
Should've been from the beginning, because this is quite a, a massive endeavor, so it would've been nice if there was a little bit more communication on that end also. Thank you.
Yes.
That does, definitely, Naz. I do have a number of questions and concerns that I'd be willing to express. Let me start out by saying that it is a prime piece of property and the town would love to see some development on it, but ask them to do the right kind of development. Initially, it looks like taking 10 pounds of sugar and trying to get into a five-pound bag, to be honest with you. I've attended the planning board meeting. It's an aggressive plan. I think initially, they proposed 52 hotel rooms and I think you made the comment at the last planning board meeting that you found out that the chains are not interested in anything less than 60 hotel rooms, which indicates that this could possibly be sold or operated by a chain. I think the concern that I have is the Town Board rushing on behalf of the town for applying for a $2 million grant. I think the Town Board is here to help businesses, but I don't think this, this plan is right for any application going in to the state. It seemed to be rushed. I mean, it's probably only four, or five, or six weeks ago that this thing was even presented for the Restore New York funding. Couple of concerns I have is the parking space site on the orig, on the main building there, was that 320, 317?
317.
317 indicates, I think, 52 parking spaces. The neighboring parcel, where you're saying you're gonna create a municipal parking lot, has 36 parking spaces and that you're gonna lease it to the town and I think I just heard you say you're not gonna charge the town for leasing the property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Here's what I look at this being sort of a shell game, because I know at the planning board meeting, I don't think the consultants or even the planning board members could get. planning board members could get their arms around how many parking spaces are required based on our zoning because of changes in the occupancy and the use. I mean, it's going to be a sixty-room hotel, it's going to have a rooftop bar, it's going to have a bar, I think I heard, I may be wrong, but there's a second bar in the building, there's going to be a restaurant, there's going to be a conference room. A lot of things are put into this building on this piece of property. So you indicated at the planning board meeting, matter of fact, you were trying to, I think at the time, trying to get the planning board to consider waiving up to thirty percent of the parking spaces required for your property on 317, which I think Mr. Cudisco, the attorney for the planning board who's here this evening, stated that any request for waivers usually comes at the end of a project after everybody has all the details and not at the beginning. So your indication was that you were going to apply for thirty percent reduction waiving in the parking spaces, and then you would go to the ZBA to ask for various for additional parking spaces to be eliminated. And there was some discussion that you could possibly go to the zoning board and ask for all your zoning. So my question is, first of all, I'm not sure that fifty-three spaces is sufficient for the occupancy and use that's proposed on 317 for the five-story hotel with all the uses that are in there. Secondly, if it's not adequate, and on top of it, and even if it is adequate, but then if you're going to turn around and ask for a thirty percent waiver on parking spaces and go to the ZBA and ask for more parking spaces to be eliminated, those thirty-six spaces that you're putting over on the municipal lot, they're pretty much going to be for your project. Because I think I also read in the application, you're going to have the forty-five full-time equivalent employees. They have to park somewhere. So I think parking is going to be a major issue. The community's looked at parking as being an issue for years, and this could very well create a major problem for the community. The other thing I would ask is, I know on fire, Nancy mentioned fire, but I think I did hear that you have to have a twenty-six-foot wide driveway for emergency vehicle access. And right now, on the plan that was submitted, you can only get up to eighteen, eighteen feet. So that's inadequate and has to be adjusted. Another question that I had also is, you're going to tear off the small second-floor portion, but you are going to use the entire first floor. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I mean, I'm not an engineer, but my question is, has anyone looked at the viability of using that existing building to put four floors on top of it? I know there are old concrete block walls, nobody knows what the footings are, but what kind of valuation come? So my point of all of this is, the town board is going to rush to put this application in, and we don't really know if this is a viable or feasible project based on what's been proposed. And the other thing, which is very important, is the impact on the residents on Clinton Street behind the property. I mean, I'm looking at the plan, it looks like it might be one way in and then coming out on Clinton. I couldn't tell from the plan, but based on the diagonal parking spaces along the side of the building, it would indicate that the parking, the driveway is going to go probably towards Clinton Street, I assume.
Yeah, that's the way it is now and that's the way it's projected.
Well, right now, the traffic can go either way. It can come out on Main Street or come in on Clinton. But no consideration has been given, and the town board hasn't given any consideration before they applied for a $2 million grant for a project like this. What is the impact on the residents on Clinton Street? You're going to have this high volume of traffic pouring out of there. You're going to have people parking on Clinton Street because it's not going to be enough parking on the properties that you're talking about. And I just think that at this point, it's very premature, and I think it's wrong for the board, as much as we want to help business, help business come in and build and develop, this project is not ready for this board to take a position to ask the state of New York for a $2 million grant for this project at this point in time. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. If I could, I would just say that you raised a lot of issues which we're working on with the planning board. Parking is a substantive issue, and pursuant to the planning board's request, we had a traffic study done, and the planning consultant asked very specifically about the impact on Clinton Street, and we're providing that information as well. And we're hoping to further that discussion at the workshop this Thursday. It would be great if this project were fully developed and we were just where it needed to be at the time that the application was due, but the money gets announced, it shows up in rounds, and then it disappears, and if you don't apply when it's available, you don't get it. And so we're here, we're not up against any other projects in Cornwall. We're up against projects from upstate and getting grant money and bringing it to Cornwall and increasing the economic development of Cornwall. And if we don't apply, there's no opportunity to do it.
Didn't you indicate that the first round has already occurred?
The first round's occurred...
And that only took how many months?
So it was announced in July, it was completed in the fall, and they let a hundred and two million of the two-fifty out. So this second round may be the last of it, or there might be a third round, I don't know, depending on the applications they receive.
So I'm going to address a piece of this. So this program, Restore New York, was not open for, maybe Steve can correct me on this, for a number of years. It may have been, I don't know how long it's been, but Restore New York was not available for a number of years. It just appeared this past year. It was, you know, it was in the budget. We don't know if this is the last round for a number of years. So if we miss this opportunity, and this does not lock us in to planning board approval on this project, it doesn't lock us into doing this project, it just, it preserves the ability for the town to apply for money for this project. We could be awarded this, and the town board could decide at a later date that it doesn't want to pursue this anymore because we would then, I believe, have to vote to accept the money. So this just, this, because what if this goes away and they don't reopen this for another five to 10 years? Well, then this is lost as a tool to, you know, for this project. So there really is no risk for the town to applying for this because, one, we don't have to accept the money if it is awarded, and we don't get any money if it doesn't meet planning board approval. So really, there's no risk to the town. So the town board could have decided in the spring, we don't like the way this project is going, and if Restore New York gets awarded, we're just not going to accept it, we're just not going to do it. So that's, so there's kind of like built-in fail safes here. But if the state, if the governor does not include this in her budget for this year and it goes away for five years, there's not another chance for this project to get that money.
Yeah, Josh, if I could, that was well said. This was an extremely popular downtown revitalization tool about, you know, several years ago, and it disappeared from the state budget and for about seven years. And Governor Hochul has reinstituted it this year and offered two rounds. It was funded with a total of $250 million. The first round, as you previously stated, I think the application deadline was actually in October, it was announced in July, and the awards were announced in December. Over $100 billion were awarded. Two of the projects we handled, in Peekskill and Poughkeepsie, were awarded, you know, funds. And the second round is, again, they didn't give a lot of time on these rounds. They announced the second round, I think about a month and a half ago. We didn't have a lot of time to pull this together, but you are correct in saying that there's no guarantees that this funding program will be in existence in the next budget. So it is one of those opportunities where, you know, it's a unique funding program from all that I work with to help revitalize downtown buildings that have been vacant for a long time, especially ones that have gone through remediation. Those projects can be extremely expensive to develop, and I think that's the purpose of this grant program. It provides those extra dollars necessary to incentivize the project and make it worth doing for the developer who is ultimately taking the most risk. So there you go. We don't have a lot of time to get this in, and you are right, you were not obligated to accept the award, and it is contingent upon it, of course, passing through C for the final site plan review.
Any other questions from members of the public? Yes?
Yeah, sure. My name's Justin Rose, I'm a relatively new resident here. Hadn't planned on asking anything, but this is all news to me, so I'm glad I came. An apologies if I'm ignorant to kind of the line of how this works, but you had mentioned that, I think it's called Two Boys One Girl LLC, they're the ones building it, is that correct? I guess my question is, where are they from exactly? Are they someone local? Because when I think of economic development, I think of something that's kind of from our community, from this area, that would be bringing jobs here and, you know...
Stand up, kid. Doing those types of things.
Yes, oh, okay, gotcha, okay. I see.
He's also a Cornwall resident.
He has two sons and one daughter. It's not a, it's not something hinky. He has two sons and a daughter. That's where the name comes from. And I believe he went to high school in Uber, which is local enough.
Yeah, yeah. Good to know, thank you for sharing. Appreciate it.
Yes?
Hi, I hadn't planned to say anything, but since, you know, I feel like there's a need to say something in the vein of support. I believe that there are hundreds of thousands of people that come to visit Storm King Art Center, not to mention the people that come to visit, you know, to hike Storm King, to kayak, to bike, you know, all these people come to Cornwall and there's nowhere to stay. You know, you look at like the rooms and painters are, they book them on Airbnb for $110 a night. It's sort of a joke as a hotel, and I think, sorry to, I mean, I can do, they would say that and no justice in that either, but I feel like it's really important to have places to stay in Cornwall, to attract tourists, to attract people spending money, and to support all of the businesses in Cornwall. I think that with this hotel, this hotel will benefit the businesses up and down Main Street. Main Street is sort of a central place that we gather many times per year for, you know, festivals, and it's a very walkable town. Part of this reason that, oh, I should have said upfront, we're Cornwall West residents, we also own some commercial property here, so we're, you know, all in on Cornwall, although we are relatively new residents. But, you know, part of the thing that we love about Cornwall is its walkability, and I think that people will come to this hotel and they will visit businesses all up and down Main Street as well as just benefiting the overall community and jobs. So I am in support of this, and I just wanted to say that because that voice hasn't been heard yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say that the origin story of this project really was Keith and I sitting down talking about the property, looking at the zoning and knowing the area, West Point, Storm King, and then going the next step and doing a feasibility study and understanding that there is a need for something like this, which isn't a 1950s roadside 9W type thing or Hotel Fed or Legoland, that there is nothing quite like this in the area. So the idea was to fill a need, and we think it would be a great addition, and thank you.
Yes?
Andy Piskowski here at Cornwall Road. I don't think there's any question that the town or the area needs a hotel. I think, once again, we get back to, can the services and the geography support it? And I think to say the least, this whole project is being rushed, and that's my biggest concern. That place will be booked up, I think, ninety percent of the time, and no question about it. But I think it's just going to create chaos the way it looks right now, the way you're explaining it, and do we have a traffic report yet or is that done? Can we read that?
We have a traffic, we have a traffic report, which I've submitted to the consultants, which we'll review and it works out, which will be available.
It's not done yet, right?
We have it, it'll be available at the next planning board meeting.
It's not done yet, right? No one's laid their eyes on it from the planning board or the town?
It was forwarded to the consultants already.
The town's consulting, planning board's consultants.
So hasn't the town seen it yet? Okay. So I, you know, like I said, I'm all for a nice hotel going in town. If I still employ people in Orange County, and I did employ a lot of people here at one time, my biggest concern is, I hate it when people say jobs. Our workforce is stressed out here. If you're going to employ people, I would say you're probably going to wind up poaching them from local businesses. And, you know, that's my experience is through the years, for over thirty-five years employing people in this county, the last ten years, there's people that have a lot of skin in the game here. Canterbury, Leos, a bunch of restaurants, and their biggest problem right now is finding help. So once again, I'm not against progress, but it's got to be the right formula. And I do think if anyone's saying, the board, it's no cost to the town, I think you've been spinning your reels pretty hard here, trying to push this whole project forward. And it's got to be right. That's all it comes down to. I'm not against it, but it's got to be right. Maybe it's my age, driving down Main Street now with the way cars are parked, boy, I've driven every type of commercial vehicle, and it's a challenge now. The parking, are you interested in widening Main Street at all?
That's quite, that's too big of an endeavor.
Okay, well, the whole issue is, you bring in more traffic, is there a need to do it?
Well, the theory is, having a Main Street hotel is that once they come, people are going to park their car and they'll walk around because they are downtown.
That's great. You know, I'm not against that, but are the streets wide enough for those people to walk around without getting hit? You know, theory versus reality, that's what I think we ought to examine here, and we ought to examine it in a timely fashion because we don't want to lose an opportunity, but we want to examine it with our heads screwed in to our shoulders the right way and our brain functioning the right way. Not out of urgency because we're afraid that we're going to lose money, you know. I think, you know, there's got to be a better thought process put into this. That's my two cents.
Thank you. And I would just say that the town's consultants for the planning board are very thorough, and so it'll be fully vetted by the time we're done and before any money is let, so...
Yeah, I mean, not a dollar of state money will go towards this project unless the planning board approves it. So, I mean, as far as, and this is, I have to say, quite common across the state in economic development, when you have a program that opens up, oftentimes municipalities, they will work to apply for funds for projects, knowing that if the project never happens or the community doesn't approve it, those funds never go towards the project, it never gets awarded, but this is, this is just how the process plays out. So yes, I do believe there is no, there is nothing that the town is losing here by applying for something that if the project doesn't proceed, the town doesn't get any money. We're just preserving access to a pot of money that may go away for seven years.
Hi, James Jackson. I love the direction of this project. I think this is the kind of stuff we want to see come into town. I think almost all of the concerns I've heard raised are valid. Driving down Main Street, I'm teaching my daughter how to drive right now. We are avoiding Main Street until she's eighteen, and that's just a family rule. So, you know, this looks great in a lot of ways. I agree, maybe it's a little bigger than we would want in town, but, you know, you got to give and you got to take. I would like to hear if there, you know, mitigation strategies that I would really think would benefit sort of a larger area. And one of the things I would think about there would be, I think about Beacon has a free bus service. Now, we're going to have new tax revenues coming in, we're going to have money that this is going to generate, some sort of service that would help get the people from Main Street down to the Village, over to the hiking trails, over to some of the other municipal stuff, maybe even, you know, into some of the other areas during rush hours, during peak times when we see people running, also helping to expand the viability of the rest of the community. I think something like that would go a long way to having people come, park, stay, but then be able to be pedestrian and use... but then be able to be pedestrian and use, you know, public services to get around. And I think that would really improve the quality of the community. I love the, you know, the, the pedestrian nature of our town, it's wonderful, and, you know, we all, we all really like that, and, you know. Then is there any way we could take out just parking on one side of Main Street, maybe? If we get like, what, what if we get a, is it a two-level parking structure? Anyway, too much to ask, too much to ask.
So I do.
But the, the bus service, I think, is something we really should consider. I know we do it for the seniors. I'd love to see something like that expanded to the larger community, uh, you know, for my kids and stuff, so I don't have to let them drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, you know, look, as part of the planning board process and the traffic study and whatnot, some of the stuff's gonna come out through this process, about how do we make it, you know, uh, Main Street better to accommodate this? I'm sure this is all gonna come out as part of the discussion. The other thing I would add is that if you go down past Tamar Lane, count the number of empty parking spots that are considered Main Street parking spots. I mean, there's like thirty there. They're never full, they're always empty, people always say there's nowhere to park on Main Street. It's really about, in some cases, the parking situation on Main Street's about parking behavior. And, you know, there's different groups of, uh, of folks on Main Street that use parking in different ways. And so you can't look at it as a one-size-fits-all parking approach, but, you know, this'll come out when the town starts going through a parking study that's in a draft form right now. There are, again, thirty spots that are from Tamar Lane that go all the way down, that are always vacant, no one ever parks there. Those are certainly spots that I've always thought should be considered as part of the calculation for, you know, employees or business owners or whatever. So that's just something I would add.
A lot easier to, to take advantage of those spots, if you can park down there and take a, a small local bus that, that lasts, you know, miles, so to speak.
Is there any other questions? No. Oh, uh, uh, I'm sorry, board members.
Board members.
Yes.
I think you were starting to answer the question that I was going to have. Last year, we did authorize a parking study. And, um, it would be good to actually have the results of that parking study reported to the public, uh, and also to be part of this project, because this, I'm looking at the, the big picture. You know, what is available, what did the study that we paid for say? How could it help the developers, you know, tailor their plans as well in terms of parking as well? I have a couple of questions. I don't know if Keith, you can answer this question, or, I don't know. All right, so you wrote a letter, that's why I'm, I was looking at you. Okay, so you dated a letter today, and you basically, you just said you're the managing member. Um, and this is the purpose of the letter, is to fulfill the commitment requirement for project financing, which is a component of the above referenced New York grant application. And again, you can jump in and answer this as well. I don't know where Steve went. The estimated pro- project cost is seven point five million dollars. Um, and then, you know, you wanna apply for the two million for the New York, uh, the Restore New York request. Do you have to verify that you have the finances to make up the difference?
So, I, I.
I'm just trying to understand that.
To be fair, I wrote that letter.
Oh, you wrote it, okay.
And it's Keith's signature.
I saw your name, Keith, so I.
And I wrote that letter in, in the form of what's required for the application process. Insofar as there's grant monies which are awarded, they want a commitment from the, from the person who's developing the project, that they will put in their matching money.
So they have to verify, they have to verify they have that money?
No, but that letter is attesting that we have the financial wherewithal to put in that matching money. And.
Okay.
So, to.
Okay.
And, and that's what they require for the application.
How do we, how do we know?
Nobody calls up and demands your back, you know.
Well, when you apply for a mortgage or you do, if you're doing a business, yes, you do.
But there is a piece of property there without any mortgage on it, um, and what we're talking about.
We're talking five point five million dollars.
No, but we're talking about matching money for the grant, and it's ten percent of the grant amount. So we are verifying that we have two hundred thousand dollars available. And I can tell you that there is a piece of property, which is an acre large on Main Street, uh, which the assessor has, had more than two hundred thousand dollars without a mortgage on there.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm very comfortable with that as, as a station.
Okay, so I have a second, a third question, but I think Josh, you kind of answered my second question. Um, if you go to the page where it says three thousand seven, uh, three seventeen and three twenty-five Main Street, you have the property assessments and, and, um, property tax. And I see, yes, you have the twenty twenty-two assessment, and then it skips to twenty twenty-five. What, what's going on in between there?
Um, well, some type of ramp up. When you do.
What do you mean a ramp up?
When you build a property, um, you tend to get partial assessments, right? So, in the construction process and before it's fully utilized, I wanted to take a number after we were completely built, after the place was operating, so we had a stable number. So I chose twenty twenty-five and, and put down a six million dollar assessment and with a close to an eight million dollar fair market value. Because that's what our studies are saying, um, that the place will be worth in terms of real estate at that point in time. And so, but in between twenty twenty-two, when we start making improvements, the assessor during the tentative assessment role, which will be, uh, in March, they'll come out, if we have done improvements by the valuation date, which is probably in July, she'll come and, and, and see what improvements are there, and then she'll raise the assessment as we're going along. That's typical for construction projects. So, but there is always a lesser value when it's incomplete, because it's not, um, they put, they put some value on the C O.
Okay, so we could actually see a decrease from twenty.
No, you won't see a decrease from twenty twenty-two, because this is mostly land value.
Okay.
You're gonna, you're gonna see this go to, um, as the improvement's going. So it's, it'll, I would imagine twenty twenty-four, if everything goes as planned, you know, you would have a fairly sizable assessment. I don't, I, uh, I don't think we'll have everything completed by valuation in twenty twenty-three.
It also depends on the date when the work's going in and the dates that the assessor has to meet. So it's probably gonna span multiple years to get up to the full value. So it, it is likely that it's twenty-five.
That's why.
That's why.
Are you seeking, I don't know, and this is probably too early, are you seeking any pilots?
We're hoping to get through tonight, at this point in time.
That's right. I, I'm just looking at the big picture and asking the questions.
Whatever, whatever's available, I'm gonna ask, um, you know, but I, I, uh, at this point in time, we're, we're hoping to get, uh, Restore New York grant, uh, application submitted by the town and a resolution from the town board, um, and, and see what happens.
Is that, is that the smallest it can be and still be viable?
I would say, it's a great question. And, and Mr. Perez is not a, a hotel expert. I'm not a hotel expert. We are, um, our research says that Hilton is the stronger name and has the stronger back office in hotels. And they have a boutique program that we're interested in. Some of the research we've done has suggested that, um, there's sixty rooms is a magic number. Uh, we started off at fifty-two, um, this is still something that we're gonna review with the planning board. It may, it may shrink back, I, I don't know. We, we're still in negotiations with, with Hilton and quite possibly Marriott, but the idea was to build a boutique hotel with some type of brand, not to sell it or have it be operated by Hilton, but, but have it be part of their program, so we have the, uh, facility for the online bookings and the credits and rewards and what have you, that make the occupancy rates, uh, work. And so that's generally where the direction we're going.
You know, I've heard some great comments from the public, uh, in reference to safety, engineering, and stuff like that. I, I have not seen an engineering study myself personally about the foundation of that building, and also, uh, you know, the removal of any contaminated waste that may, that, I noticed a report out there.
So.
Is that available? I haven't seen it myself. And also, I, when we met, the very first time I met you, a couple of months ago, uh, I talked about, you know, fire safety, because that's my, that's my career, that's my background. And, and that's near to my heart, fire safety. And, and I'm, I'm surprised that the fire department was not involved in this conversation right from the beginning, because, you know, putting apparatus in there from front and back, you know, when you're lining the building, bringing entrances to place, hooking up the FDCs and so on and so on, in case of emergency, you know, there needs to be space. So that's, you know, if there's a quiet space, is that could take up the parking, that may reduce the parking for, per room, you know, or code?
You're a hundred percent right that we should've had the conversation with the fire department earlier. Unfortunately, we just, um, there was one person we reached out to who had, uh, the blessing of a child. We're reaching out to somebody else, and we're hoping to have it coordinated this week, but it should've been done earlier. And, uh, your other questions were engineering. We, we did dig up a footing, uh, we did, uh, do some structural probing to understand what we have there. Generally speaking, full architectural and engineering plans come after we have site plan, uh, or are farther down the road and are comfortable that we're getting site plan. And so there's a question of, uh, a project of this magnitude, you can have a lot of engineering studies, um, and if it doesn't move forward, then it's a lot of money down the drain. And so at this point in time, we've done, um, uh, the structural probing, which makes us comfortable with what we have, with our plan, with our design. We would be adding, we'd be filling the block solid, we'd be adding center poke, we're digging up the entire insides, adding, uh, center, uh, posts and piers, and, and splitting the load. And so we have ideas of which direction we wanna go. We don't have final engineering, but we certainly would have that before any shovel goes in the ground.
You know, I, again, with, no, is there enough, again, my question, I mean, we go back to the fire and parking and stuff, because they're getting apparatus in there, fire blast stuff. Is there enough real estate to still sustain what's gonna be required by FD and also still have the appropriate parking?
Our parking, it's a great question. Uh, our, our parking study, our traffic report, shows that we are appropriate with parking except on Saturday nights, um, with our current, uh, layout. So we chose an overflow on Saturday nights. One way to look at that is, is Cornwall wasn't that packed on Saturday nights, and, and, uh, there could be some overflow parking. But that's about where our traffic report is. We're hoping to review further with the consultants on Thursday. And yes, uh, as you get, as you well know, as you get taller in structures, um, they want more room for a fire lane, and that can have impacts on the parking as well. That's something we need to review with the fire department and quite possibly, um, look for some type of variance from the state, depending on what the, but not without the support of the fire department. So.
But that's the New York State Fire Code.
There is certainly a New York State Fire Code.
Right, you can't just get around this.
You, you, there is a variance application for New York State Building Code, New York State Fire Code. All of that, uh, goes through the New York State, uh, Department of State, and there is a, a general application process. But they, uh, particularly on fire, they like to see support of the local officials. On, on building, it tends to do more with, um, your specific structure and how it came to be.
Rochelle, when?
Okay.
Other board members?
Could I just add that, um, my understanding is, this is phase one of the project, and we're just applying, the town is gonna approve to apply for the grant. Whether we go get it or not, we do not know. So the details, which everybody is, uh, nervous or stressed about, it comes way later. And nothing passes planning board. We have an amazing planning board staff that building a shed is a, of, you know, you need to go through seven hills and seven mountains, let alone this project. So please have trust in, in our government, and local government, and the attorneys, and the, this is beautiful project. I think it, it will revitalize our downtown, I live in downtown, and I'm in fully support of this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess what I would just say in terms of this is that, again, this is not, you know, if the board authorizes the submission, it doesn't lock the town into doing this. It doesn't guarantee planning board approval. It just allows the possibility of having funding down the road. There's really no risk to the town, I, I mean, there's not. I mean, from a, if the planning board decides they don't want this, and it doesn't meet the approval, or if the town board at a later date decides for whatever reason they don't wanna do it, they don't have to accept the funding if it should come through. So really, the town board is in the driver's seat on this completely. But if we don't submit the application and the governor and the state legislature takes his program away for another seven years, this isn't around for seven years. And so, you know, and what if the planning board does approve it and they work it out? Well, we will have potentially lost the opportunity to, to apply for two million dollars for this project, get the public parking on the other property, that will have been lost. But there's really no, if, if, if the town board decides and say, you know, whenever they, uh, they award it, well, we don't want it because we don't like the direction of the project. But you don't have to accept it. I mean, you can make that decision, you know, and by then it'll be further in the planning board process as well. So more, more will come out. This just preserves the right to access the funding.
If I could be the devil's advocate, we're, we're also putting our reputation as a municipality out there. And I, wouldn't we want to feel solid that the project that we're bringing forward to the state for this grant is, is, has been well thought out, well planned, and we have a better chance of actually getting it?
Well, I would say that.
You know, I, I want our, I want our best foot forward, if I could be perfectly honest.
We all do, uh, but the timing is, is what it is. And this application does not preclude the town from any other grant application. It's, it's simply, uh, a window which is gonna close.
So, you know what, and oftentimes with projects like this, I mean, you submit, you know, multiple times, or look, we know, you know, there's a scoring rubric for this, the state's gonna look at it, they're gonna consider it. They get applications like this all the time, and if they decide, but, you know, Empire, I assure you that Empire State Development is not gonna come back to the town and be like, oh my God, they submitted this project. I mean, they review these projects all the time, uh, you know, varying degrees of, I, I'm just.
But we also want the profi-, we also, as a municipality, we wanna show that we're also being professional about it, and we're not just taking any project. We wanna bring, again, I keep going back to, our best project forward, because we do, ultimately, yes, for you it's great, but also economically and, right, for us, it's, we want it to be successful too.
Economically.
And, and aesthetically, and our community as well, because we do have a lot of people living right around that.
But economically, it's, it's hard to think of another downtown project which would have this magnitude of economic benefit for the town. I, 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 I mean, we're going from twelve thousand dollars in property taxes, zero sales tax, to seven hundred something thousand dollars a year, plus additional things. So it's, uh, from, now, of course, aesthetics, um, are a separate concern, and a lot of the planning board concerns are already out there, and we have to work through them, like any other applicant.
And the businesses that have been there, you know, around you, you know, I'm also concerned for them. And, you know, you brought up a great point about, you know, taking employees away, but I don't wanna run any of these other, out of business. I would hope it would enhance and help them, but.
It used to, the economic development, uh, used to be all about jobs. I, I didn't mention jobs once in my presentation, because.
No, but I'm also thinking the businesses are ready, and their success, because they've been struggling.
We, we all are struggling, trying to find help.
Yeah, I mean, look, so I mean, you know, just in broader terms, uh, finding employees for jobs in New York State is, is across the board an issue, but it doesn't mean that we should not do any more economic development for fear of we can't find employees. The, the, the answer is we should train employees, we should have workforce development programs, and we should work to find them. It's not that we just stop all economic development because we can't find employees. I mean, that, that's just a problem that has emerged since the pandemic across the state. But, I mean, the county has not stopped. But, I mean, the county has not stopped, you know, developing projects. Newburgh is not, Middletown is not. You just, businesses work on the solutions and they, you know, you have the Department of Labor, there's different partnerships. If we go to build this, they will work, I'm sure, with the Department of Labor to help staff this with, you know, BOSIs, with, you know, Sullivan Community College, who has a culinary program with the CIA. They will work to staff this with people from outside of the area to come and staff it as well. As I'm just saying, it's not, these are all, that's not an insurmountable reason to not do this, is definitely.
Again, I'm, I'm looking out for the businesses that are here and how, you know, the impact it has on them.
Josh, can I?
Yeah.
Is that okay? So I'm not against the grant, I think it's good. I would support the town applying for the grant. I don't know if you're at liberty to even say this, but let's say the town doesn't get the grant. You guys own a property, right? So now what happens there? Nothing? It stays vacant again?
We would have to analyze and assess at that time. I mean, this is a big part of this application, so I don't know. We would look at it at that time, we'd look at the feasibility study, we'll look at the cost. We don't know, construction costs have been a big variable. There's a lot of moving parts right now in, in building something. We have metals and plastics, which are up 100% from last year. It's, we don't know where things are going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we just had to, the Chamber of Commerce, they submitted a letter of support for this as well. So, you know, I mean, look, certainly, you know, I'm hoping that the town board will consider, you know, the resolution, at least allowing us to submit the application, because we lose an opportunity for this project, it goes away potentially if it's not in the governor's budget this year. And look, if the town board decides later that they do not want to accept the money or if the planning board decides, or, you know, for that matter, any, any other body with authority decides, the project doesn't happen. But I, I think this is a real opportunity for, you know, Main Street, this project in particular. So if there's no further comments, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Razi?
Yes.
Mr. Wodkowski?
Yes.
Let me.
Judge.
Yeah.
I'm okay, but do you want to close?
I actually opened it, I don't worry. Steve is not in favor.
Of opening? Oh, no, I grabbed it.
Okay.
So, all right, we're back. All right, so next up, we have the approval of minutes for the December 13th, 2022 work session and special meeting and the December 20th, 2022 regular meeting. And I get a motion to approve the minutes. To accept.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Razi?
Yes.
Mr. Wodkowski?
Yes, is there any public comment on agenda ahead of us?
Yeah, I want to address the issue of the, the Redden property. First, I want to start out by saying I've known the Redden thing with work. So this is not something against Redden, but I think it's something that is in the interest of the town. And I think the whole issue would be turnaround of the park, small parking space on the Boulevard that sits on, I think it's 14 plus acres of the Redden property, which is not developed, it's just forest land and has a conservation easement on it. That turnaround parking area has been, it existed for over 30 years. It was used by the, first put in at the request of the school district because they had a bus route that had to make that sharp turn off of Hasbrook onto the Boulevard and they needed a little more room, so that's why it was put in there. And over the years, one, two, three cars at the most have parked there to be able to walk on the Boulevard and just enjoy the area. The question has come up, Mrs. Redden had written a few letters to the town board and it was in November of 2021 that the town board adopted resolution to be able to respond to Mrs. Redden's letter. She basically wanted the town to excavate out all the material that was there and to eliminate the parking space. Our attorney at the time advised the town board that we had a prescriptive easement over the property because it had been used more than 10 years for public purposes. So one, one thing I want to emphasize first is that in the resolution, it doesn't say that we are now in November of 2020 on creating a prospective easement. What it says is that the board respectfully declines the said request from Jeanette Redden on the grounds that even if the parking improvement was constructed outside and right away from the Boulevard, the board has acquired a prescriptive easement. So that easement has existed for years. The letter I read, I saw the letter from the land trust, who took a conservation easement in 2016 on the property. So clearly, the prescriptive easement that the town had for public use of the property preceded the conservation easement by decades the property was used for. The land trust says in the letter, assuming the town acquired prospective, prescriptive rights to use the turnaround area, such rights do not encompass the right to expand the previous use of that area. And in earlier paragraph, the land trust says the town has changed the location because it expanded the area from being 54 feet long when conservation easement was granted in 2016 to now being 120 feet long, more than doubles the size of the turnaround and widen the area by five feet. Well, I mean, I can tell you, I'm very well aware of the area, that, that there's no way that that turnaround was increased from whatever was 54 feet to 120 feet. So my question would be, before the board takes any action, do you give up the public's right to park a couple of cars there and walk on a Boulevard and enjoy the scenery? When the land trust got the, obtained the conservation easement, did they do a land survey reflecting all the boundaries, leaps and bounds and what have you, and certainly reflecting the turnaround? And similarly, in 2022, did they do another survey that would show that the town, in the six years since the conservation easement was placed from 2016 to 2022, that in fact the town did expand it by 120 feet, because that, that just didn't happen? So really, I think, and part of the resolution the board is looking at to consider, I mean, this is just a little plot of land out of 14 acres, thousand square feet, 1,200 square feet, whatever it is, for a couple of people to park their car there and walk on the Main Street. This resolution includes the town having an excavating material out, putting beautiful hardwood trees and shrubs, topsoil and grass. I mean, it's pretty excessive for the taxpayers to have to do that, because we shouldn't be giving up the public's right to park their car there. So what I say is really, what's the harm? What's the harm in leaving it the way that it is? Could it be cleaned up a little more? It could be cleaned up a little more, there's no question. No one lives on the property, I don't think it's even within sight of the Reddins residence, which is further up on the River Hill Road. Certainly, the Reddins benefited by giving the conservation easement, I think they had their assessment lowered by almost a quarter of a million dollars. I could be wrong, but I think it was 360 some thousand, dropped down to about 120 some thousand. So they benefited financially from putting the conservation easement on it. So my point is real simple. Why not let the public park their car on that tiny parcel that they've been doing for more than 30 years? And before the town board gives in to those who are more fortunate than the average person, take a look at the real issues here and stand up for the general public that for over 30 years have been able to park their car on the Boulevard and take a walk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. So, all right, so next up, I do have the resolution which would allow the town to submit to Restore New York application. I'll certainly, you know, does, I'd like us to do this tonight so we can meet the deadline on the 27th. There is no harm to the town if we put this forward, it just preserves the right. The town board at a later date has the ability, if they don't like the project, to not accept the funds or if it fails to meet planning board approval, then it goes away as well. So, you know, I would certainly open this up to, you know, to hear what the town board says about that. Carrie, do you have any? Okay. All right, so then, I'm going to read the resolution. The resolution to apply for funding under Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program, whereas the town of Cornwall is eligible for grant funding under the Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program. And whereas the town board held a public hearing on January 17th, 2023, at which it considered proposals that qualify for funding under the program to be included in an application that will be submitted to Empire State Development, ESDC, particularly the proposed, proposal of two girls and one boy holding LLC, to renovate and make alterations and additions to certain real property located at 317 Main Street, Cornwall, New York, to transform the currently vacant structure on the property from a former automobile sales and service station to a boutique hotel with off-street parking facilities located on adjoining property at 325 Main Street, Cornwall, New York. And whereas the proposed project is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and zoning code, and whereas the proposed project will facilitate effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources so as to promote both economic development and preservation of community resources in the town of Cornwall. Whereas the proposed project will develop and enhance infrastructure such as municipal parking and other facilities in a manner that will attract, create and sustain employment opportunities in the town of Cornwall. And whereas the proposed financing for the proposed project is appropriate, now therefore it hereby resolves as follows. That one, the town board will sponsor an application for Restore New York for the proposal of two girls and one boy's holding LLC, to renovate and make alterations and additions to certain real property located at 317 Main Street, Cornwall, New York, to transform the currently vacant structure on the property from a former automobile sales and service station to a boutique hotel with off-street parking facilities located on adjoining property at 325 Main Street, Cornwall, New York. Two, that the town supervisor is hereby authorized to sign applications for grant funding under Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program for the said project. And three, that if the grant is awarded and accepted, the town board will administer the grant in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations established by Empire State Development Corporation. And I get a motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Ms. Scott?
I reluctantly, I'm going to vote yes, but I want, I publicly want to say, I'd like to see a lot more in terms of the process, the organizations, like, so we have a better understanding of the project. I definitely want the communication with the fire companies because that's a public safety issue that I, I can't ignore. And, and three, please, you know, try to give us information, like, in a more timely manner, because I, I found it a little frustrating myself. I'm playing catch-up on, on some of these things and I, I just think if, if this is going to be a big investment in the community, I want it to work and I want it to be the right thing for our community. So I, I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes, and I, I just want to state that I concur with Councilwoman Scott with that statement also, I totally concur with that. I'd say yes for me.
Ms. Michael Razi?
Yes.
Mr. Wodkowski?
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have the holiday lighting contest. I mean, obviously, it's a, you know, almost a month after Christmas, but we did, I took a look at what the board members picked in terms of their winners and it looks like for the business, well, that was pretty easy because they only won. So it is going to be Madison Avenue, children's clothing for the business winner, 19 Knoll Crest and then 1246 Route 94. So it's kind of a mixture of.
All over the team.
Yeah, yeah.
Good choices.
So we will, you know, tomorrow I'll have Denise reach out to the winners for the good certificates, to the local restaurants.
Do you need money for that?
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Okay, okay.
And then use taxpayer money?
Oh, of course. So next up, we have this new OC Tourism Grant Program that just got announced last week. So OC Tourism is going to allow municipalities to apply for grants up to $4,999 that will be available to municipalities to promote events that will bring in visitors and tourists into the community. So I have the application. It's pretty easy, it's like a two pager, you fill it out and you hit submit. So right now, I've got the Economic Development Advisory Committee looking at this. I think Main Street Committee should look at this too and they can, so for instance, like an event.
Like a kiosk or something?
Well, no, it's for an event.
Oh, an event.
So it would be promotional, so it would be like, let's say, we have the Fall Festival, we would do this and then the town would spend up to that amount of money on banners, advertising, social media ads, et cetera. Maybe it's not the Fall Festival, maybe it's another event that we choose to do. But this is, this is new this year.
Okay.
So, you know, there's no rush on it, so we'll look to do this maybe later in the spring. Next up, we have the Association of Towns Annual Meeting Training and Perdiem. So I just want to get, take a voice vote on this, if I can get a motion to approve the town reimbursing town board members and staff for attending the annual Association of Towns meeting on February 19th to the 22nd. It, it'll include cost of attending the event, there's also a $50 a day perdiem for food that the town offers as well. Yeah, and if, and if board members could, you know, let me know who's attending so we can complete the.
Right, do you know approximately how many people? I mean, I know.
Yeah, I mean, we can all go. I mean, we just have to.
Just travel.
Get the information to Denise and then we'll.
And then we're having other staff decide. Oh, I don't, I misunderstood.
So in some cases, there may be other department staff that, that want to go or folks from other committees that have, you know, because there's different training opportunities. So maybe we would reimburse them for paying, you know, for the conference fees or something. But, you know, we'll, we'll get a list together and we'll, you know, circulate that. So certainly, if you're interested in going, let Denise and I know and we'll get the list together and, so if I can get a motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Razi?
Yes.
Mr. Wodkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution accepting the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Hasbrook Drainage Project for the planning grant. So we were awarded, as you're aware, $310,745. There is a 10% match requirement, which, we're going to have to make a change to the resolution, but I'll just do it verbally. And so the match requirement for this $300,000 grant is going to be $31,745. That's going to pay for all the engineering and designs of the Hasbrook Drainage Project grant. And at the end of this, this is going to give us the, the real true cost of the project. I mean, it may be more, it may be less, but we, you know, but at least we're having that portion of it paid for by, by FEMA. So let me, is there any questions? Okay. Whereas the town of Cornwall is entertaining an infrastructure improvement project known as the Hasbrook Drainage. now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby agrees to enter into said agreement with Munistat, a copy of which is annexed here too, and that the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Alright, next up, I have a resolution accepting the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Hasbrook Drainage Project, it's for the planning grant. So, we were awarded, as you're aware, three hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. There is a ten percent match requirement, which, we're gonna have to make a change to the resolution, but I'll just do it verbally. And so, the match requirement for this three hundred thousand dollar grant's gonna be thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. That's gonna pay for all the engineering and designs of the Hasbrook Drainage Project grant. And at the end of this, this is gonna give us the real, true cost of the project. I mean, it may be more, it may be less, but we, you know, but at least we're having that portion of it paid for by FEMA. So, let me, is there any questions? Okay. Whereas the town of Cornwall is entertaining an infrastructure improvement project known as the Hasbrook Drainage Project, and whereas Hasbrook Area Drainage Project is eligible for a hazard mitigation grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and whereas the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services has notified the town that in order to receive a hazard mitigation grant for the Hasbrook Area Drainage Project, FEMA requires that the town commit to meet the matching fund requirement to pay for the project work. And whereas the local matching fund requirement for the Hasbrook Drainage Project is thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Oh, sorry, sorry, yeah. Yeah. And whereas the town has funds available to meet the local matching fund requirement for the Hasbrook Area Drainage Project through ARPA funds, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby commits to meet the matching fund requirement for the Hasbrook Drainage Project through a hazard mitigation program in the amount of thirty-one thousand, this is the match, this is the match.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the match, yeah, that was a...
It said ten percent.
An additional zero was added to the drafting, it happens. So, the match in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. And the town supervisor is hereby authorized to sign any and all letters and documentation necessary for procuring the hazard mitigation grant from FEMA. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a memo from the bookkeeper to attending the annual GFOA Conference. If I could get a motion to approve Pam Woods attending the annual Government Finance Officers Association Conference, March twenty-ninth to the thirty-first in Albany. The cost to attend will be two hundred and twenty-five for the conference, and hotel accommodations were two nights at a rate of one forty-five per night, plus mileage and meals. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Riverlife Park Plan. So, we're not really, given how late it is, we can certainly, I mean, just to bring you up to speed on this, this, there was an initial draft that was done, yes, correct, that's always. It's gonna show the timeline of the work that was done on it, if you open it up. So... The initial, yeah, so the initial design was put together in August, but then we had to wait until we were further along with the pool and the playground to kind of have an idea of the footprint. So, before we present this to the board as a draft, and this is just a draft, it's not going any further than that, we met last week with the engineer to basically just put a couple more things on here. So, now this is at the point where I'd like the board to take a look and see what we've laid out. I also think it's appropriate for the town to work out some type of, like, recreational survey that we put out along with this. We tried to capture as much of the stuff that we've been hearing about back when we were doing the New York Forward Grant. A lot of people, you know, through that process, told us what types of recreational activities they would want. We've also been dealing with different groups that have come forward. So, we have a lot of that, but what I'd like to do is have the town board take a look at this. We're gonna work on a survey, and we're gonna ask the public. I mean, look, obviously, there are certain recreational needs that will not work in Riverlife Park because it's just not big enough, right? Like, where do you put additional athletic fields? There's, you know, nowhere to put them in Riverlife Park. So, we're kind of limited to putting certain things here. Like, for instance, we've looked for places to add possible pickleball courts. And we've located a couple of different pickleball areas, which you can kind of see on the map. There's like a new area of the park that currently has nothing, which is over with that new house is being built. So, that's a possibility, that's one of the flattest areas of the park that might be ripe for new recreational facilities in the future. We've also got, we tried to incorporate what we thought a bigger pool complex would look like, so we know that if that's the direction that the town and the public wants to go in, that's roughly how big, like, the town pool, the kiddie pool would be, roughly. And then we also considered additional parking that we would need, some other projects on here. But, I think this is, this is just a start in terms of where we laid stuff out. We also put in the EV charging stations as well on here. You know, we have a possibility of doing anywhere from two to four EV charging stations, but we felt we should lay those out as well. I don't know, is there a topo on here too? No, maybe not, I don't know. So, but I would ask that, just take a look at this, and we will, we'll put this on for a full work session, you know, to go over. And we'll also get a survey developed with the board's input. But I wanted to get this out there because I think it's important that the board has something to start considering. So, if you wanna come see me about this, or if you wanna schedule a time to meet with myself and Sean, and Ropsha, and Gwen, who are helping on this as well, that would be, but, I don't know if you have any comments, I know you're just seeing, so it's...
The only thing I do wanna say is that I'm glad to finally see a plan. I know it's been spoken about. The EV charging stations, if you recall, the proposal and where the electrician had been putting it, had put it, is actually over in the other corner, but I'll talk to you about it. Because of the digging and the box, there was a lot of planning that went into that. So, I know this is a draft, but we really do need to sit down and maybe communicate what all the parts are. The other thing, I agree that there are some things that we could actually do with what we have. If you recall, when you and I were on the council people, and Kerry, remember we authorized to resurface the basketball courts for the pickleball. One of the complaints, and I saw the bowl of water, we paid for that. So, can't we actually get them to fix the buckle, resurface it? And we also had voted on and authorized fencing that went around the basketball court. Could we go back and do that? Because it would be less costly, and it would actually solve an immediate problem, if I could say that. Working with what we have.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Because you already have the lines there already, right? We paid for that, we paid for resurfacing, we started to pay for the fencing. So, I'm just throwing it out there that we've already invested money into this, and it would be a good way to, like, start. So, I'm just throwing my two cents in, because we did invest money already, and I don't wanna just waste it. This pickleball's gonna be up here. And there's a parking lot here, and this is where the police comes as well.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to think... We're trying to think down the road how we develop things long-term, because, just because something looks the way it does now, doesn't mean we're locked in forever. Just because we've always done something, doesn't mean we always have to do it that way.
And the other thing is, if you remember, and please, I can forget, is it Jason Burnham?
Yep.
If you recall, didn't, after the people came forward about pickleball, didn't we do a survey, and where are those results of that survey?
Yes, so essentially what...
Because I want everybody's ideas, if we're already doing all this work and collecting this data, we should be doing something with it.
Yes, so nothing has changed since the last time I reported on that, about, I don't know, back in November or December. But essentially, the pickleball and tennis people, they do not want to share... So, if you recall, the survey had to do with, should we share the courts? Should we look long-term to put pickleball elsewhere? There was a separate pickleball survey that we put out, that just dealt with pickleball. And it was like, how many people in town play pickleball, how many play tennis? You know, what do you think we should do? Should we do this, should we do that? And overwhelmingly, it was let the pickleball people play on the tennis courts.
Right, and we gave them the straps, so they could use it, right?
Yes, we did, except, long-term, and I think this is gonna bear itself out as we get into warmer weather, we're gonna start having, like, rationing of the courts for either group, because we don't, it's not gonna be adequate. So, and I know that we've already done the piece up on the hill, but we're talking about striping. We have not approved the fencing.
I thought we had something, I'm gonna go back. Remember, I thought, it just didn't finish because of the contractors, but I thought we had something.
But, I guess, so if you look at other municipalities, they striped basketball courts. And what's happening is, a lot of municipalities are moving away from this idea of, like, striping basketball courts to be used for pickleball. They're building facilities where they're sharing tennis courts, because it's not the right surface for the sport. And I'll just say that we do have, we have money in the rec fund, and we have the Delvedova Trust that could be used to build pickleball courts at no cost of the taxpayer, so...
Maybe we could talk about that Delvedova, because I looked at the resolution, and it's for the maintenance of the park. It's not, you can't use that money for building new things. It's the maintenance of the park. I'm not gonna say anything else about it.
Yeah.
But I did read that trust.
I think it helps if we focus on the big picture, the goal. The goal from this five-year master plan is to have different group of people that they have different type of activities and interests, play in a harmonious, calm, and nice way. So, right now, you're saying that why can we use the basketball courts? Because basketball courts, courts belong to basketball players.
Right, and we were just, we, just before you came to office, we did do some resurfacing, and it doesn't look right, and I want them to fix it, that's all.
It's alright, we will fix it, but we're not gonna, we're gonna have pickleball courts for this park. It's just in Phase One, so just...
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a...
Right, I'm looking for something short-term to, so that people can still play while we're going through this. I'm not, I don't think we should just jump in and do it just to do it, either. I wanna make sure we're making, I agree with you, a long-term wise investment.
And that's exactly what we're doing with the engineer.
Well, this is the first we're seeing of it, so I'm gonna go home and study it, so.
Yeah, so, so I would say that this is a, I would ask the board members for their thoughts on this, and we will look to, you know, we'll certainly have more discussion. I'm sure when we put this on a workshop agenda, and we invite the different groups in that would like these different things to come in and talk to us. I'm sure we're gonna have a lively discussion at that town board meeting, so we'll...
Maybe just a meeting on that.
So, we will punt to them.
Can we just close this?
Alright, so, next up, we have the Justice Court Order FY twenty-two. This is just a, I'm not aware that we have to, essentially, I mean, yeah, this is just the town board. The Justice Court's gonna prepare an annual, sorry, the accounting firm is gonna prepare an annual audit. It's gonna be submitted to the town board, and we're going to accept it at a date in the future. So, this, I don't believe this actually authorizes anything, just acknowledges that that the Justice Court's gonna do its annual audit, so, yeah.
It's just an FYI.
Yeah, just an FYI. So, next up, we have the Cornwall Garden Club Plant Sale. This is, you know, every year, the Garden Club asks to hold their plant sale on a date certain, and they fill out a special event permit, and they provide insurance certificate of liability. I would ask the board to authorize the Garden Club's annual plant sale for Saturday, May thirteenth. Can I get a motion to approve the special event permit?
Ms. Scott?
Yep.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
I actually did have a question about Garden Club, but I'll do that private thing.
Okay. So, next up, I have a resolution for, you may recall that we were looking for a vehicle for the Building Department, for the Building Inspector, and we were able to find one from the state contract list. And this just came in yesterday. So, we basically have, it's available, it's on the lot. It's for a twenty-twenty-two Ford Escape, all-wheel-drive. It would meet the needs of the department. With the necessary upgrades of one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents, it would bring the total to thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents. So, unless the board has any reason to hold off on authorizing this purchase for the Building Department, as you're aware, we are gonna be using ARPA funds to pay for it this year. Are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
What are the updates, is that the lighting package?
Yeah, that's what, the highway superintendent, he, this is, yeah, it's amber grill lights in the twenty-nine inch rear, LED amber directional light bar, yeah, those are the, it's...
So...
Yeah, pretty minimal. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yes.
Who are the authorized drivers, or who's gonna be using this vehicle?
So, what we're gonna be doing is, we're actually gonna be, so, there are currently a few vehicles in the department that are on their way out. This vehicle is going to be going to the Assistant Building Inspector, who's responsible for code enforcement, but also responding when there's fires and other emergencies. So, this one will be for John Hand. The other cars in the department, when we switch over a car for the new police chief, that car will come down to the Building Department and can be used for the other members of the department. But we needed to meet the needs of the code enforcement officer, and the one that's gonna be responding on nights and weekends. So, this will end up being predominantly used by John, by John Hand.
Thank you.
Can I get, so, where...
Will this will be taken, like, home?
Uh, yes, it may be taken home, yes. Yeah, I mean, if he's gonna respond...
Right, I'm just...
Yes. Yeah, so, you know, similar to, if you have a car for, you know, for emergency purposes, which certain employees do, you know, you have to allow them to take it home so they can respond to emergencies and to... So, whereas the town of Cornwall wishes to purchase a twenty-twenty-two Ford Escape from N Y E Automotive Group for a purchase price of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents for the town Building Department, and whereas the said purchase is piggybacked off a publicly bid government contract, and whereas the town has sufficient funds in twenty-twenty-three to budget to pay for the said purchase price, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby approves the proposed purchase of the said vehicle for thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents, that the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase of the vehicle. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Alright, next up, I have the resolution for the resolution approving the settlement of a notice of claim. Whereas on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the town board of the town of Cornwall adopted a resolution asserting a claim to a prescriptive easement for a parking area on certain real property located at the intersection of the Boulevard and the Hasbrook Avenue, and identified on the town tax roll as Section thirty-one, Block one, Lot fourteen point two. And whereas the town of Cornwall has received a notice of claim from the owners of said property, Jeanette Redden and David Redden, in regard to the said parking area, and whereas the town board has investigated the allegations in the notice of claim and has conferred with the town's legal counsel, engineering consultants, and highway superintendent regarding the same, and whereas rather than subjecting themselves to the expense and uncertainty of litigation, the town and the Reddens wish to settle and resolve the claim asserted in the notice of claim by entering into a settlement agreement, a copy of which is attached here too, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board resolution of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one asserting a claim for prescriptive easement is hereby rescinded, and that the town board hereby approves the said settlement agreement, and that the town supervisor is authorized to execute the settlement agreement and all documents necessary to carry out the terms. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it reluctantly, but it's on the advice of our council.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, I mean, I'm going to vote on the advice of council, but last year's advice at council was the total opposite. I will say that seeing the Hudson Highlands Land Trust involved in overseeing this, you know, the nonprofit, and just the stance of this, I was just a little disappointed. I think there's a way we could have resolved... I think there's a way, um, we could have resolved this, especially with the due information had this evening, had the, um, you know, the assessed value and everything. I think there was a, a way that, you know, one, take it back, um, you know, take it back, I understand. But, um, reluctantly, I'm going to vote yes, but, um, it's kind of a sad, sad thing.
Mr. McCarty?
Uh, I, before I say in my vote, I wanted to let the public know that I was gonna table this and I tabled it because I'm new, I'm too new to the board. After a month of a lot, and I'm telling you, a lot of research on my part with our council and, um, and with other board members and, and the public and, and stuff, I have, uh, you know, come to the conclusion that on my, my behalf, it's gonna benefit, uh, the town of Cornwall taxpayers to reluctantly say yes, you know, to resolve this issue and move forward. I'm not happy about it, but.
No.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
I also just would like to add that this was a problem that was created, uh, by the previous administration and I'm very glad that for the new administration, we've given this really done and ordered.
This was on the advice of attorney, our attorney, so it was council.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
So, you know, just before I vote on this, I, I just wanna say, so look, obviously, um, I voted no on this last November. Um, I felt as though we did not give the Reddens a chance to explain the situation, nor did we, probably a proper course of action would have been to have offered them compensation for the property instead of, you know, violating their due process and essentially taking the property through trespass over the years. Council felt that this had much less than a fifty percent chance of success in court and because of the type of case it would be, it would end up in federal court where you have five hundred dollar an hour legal fees. So in order to avoid the expense to the taxpayer, you know, could have gone into the six figures. I think this is the right course of action. Um, I'm also, you know, I'm, I'm kinda disappointed that, you know, the way that we're looking at this is that certain residents in the town don't have private property rights and due process and that because they may have money, that we should take away their constitutional rights to due process. I think that's really, sends a bad message to other people in town that would come here and invest money, because what if the town turns around and takes their property without due process? So for me, this is broader than the savings of the town. It's about the image of the town and we don't violate private property rights in the town of Cornwall because we don't like a particular group or you have money or whatever. So that's my additional stance on this, but I'm voting yes on this. Next up, we have a res- oh, sorry, I already did that. Um, next up, we have a resolution authorizing the subscription renewal for NERMAP software, which the assessor's office uses. It's for the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, this resolution would, would authorize me to sign the contract. Yes. Um, whereas NERMAP, uh, US Inc. has provided the town with a subscription renewal agreement for aerial imagery and location data and associated products and services. And whereas the town is prepared to accept the attached renewal proposal from NERMAP, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby agrees to enter into the said renewal agreement with NERMAP, a copy of which is annexed here too. And that the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms therein. Can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Um, next up, I know that this is, uh, so we don't necessarily have to act on this tonight, but, um, there is a, um, change order for the Continental Road Culvert from Arginio Brothers. So, um, I'm just gonna explain it. We have the ability to act on it later in this week on Thursday or next week at another special meeting we'll be holding to appoint a police chief, hopefully. But basically, um, yes, if you go to page, it's, I guess it's the first page and it's gonna show some of these change orders on this, so. Yes, but let me just explain this. So, so keep in mind that FEMA is reimbursing us for all of this. So they have already approved these changes.
Okay.
So basically what happened is in order to, um, put the culvert into place, we had to move a water main. And Arginio Brothers did that work. They cut and capped it. There was a, we didn't use the contingency that was built into that contract, so that gets subtracted from the total. So, you know, FEMA is gonna save eighteen thousand dollars on this. But then we had some additional brouting cement that had to be poured when they were piecing together the box culvert pieces. So there was additional cement that had to be used. So that was, that was budgeted, or, you know, so that's, that's being added. But again, FEMA is picking up this tab for this. Um, and then in order to get the crane in there, the biggest boom crane that's in Orange County, they had to actually bring in a outside tree company to take down an additional bunch of trees to get it in there. Um, and so these are the additional changes. And so obviously Arginio is seeking these costs. But again, this goes right to FEMA as part of the overall contract. So what we're gonna do is, if the board authorizes this, this will go to FEMA. This will be part of our, um, reimbursement for the project minus our five percent match requirement that we have.
Yeah, that box culvert's never gonna move this tomorrow.
No, no, it's gonna watch. So, I mean, I'll certainly, um, if the board feels that it's okay to go forward with this, I'm happy to do that. If you wanna wait until Thursday or next Thursday, I'll do that too. So, is, is there any questions?
I'll go ahead and touch those stuff.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I'd be.
Okay, so I will table that until, um, the next meeting. Okay, so next up, we have a resolution accepting the easement for one-thirty Continental Road Culvert. So this is the one where we're dealing with the estate on the issue because we had, um, the, the owner of the property is now deceased, so now the estate's handling it. So this is a different situation than the other one, which is a different matter as far as that easement is concerned. But this one, council has said that we can move forward on, um, accepting this easement. So, um, this is for one-thirty Continental Road. Whereas the town board of the town of Cornwall has undertaken a project to repair the Continental Road Culvert. And whereas the town requires an easement for construction of the wing walls of the culvert and related improvements at one-thirty Continental Road. And whereas the owners of one-thirty Continental Road are willing to provide the town with the said culvert easement, a copy of which is attached here too. Now therefore be resolved as follows. If the town board hereby accepts the said easement, that the town supervisor is authorized to execute the easement and all documents necessary to enter into, uh, and record the said easement. Can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. So next up, I have a, a good change order for a project. This is for the, um, the sidewalk project that we were doing earlier this year over in the, you know, Bridge Street, Broadway, Elm, Walnut, whatever, et cetera. So there's actually a change order that's decreasing the amount by three thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety cents. So this, I, I literally just got this today. So I will put this off until, I guess, the next meeting when we're considering the other culvert change order. I'm just bringing this to your attention tonight. Okay, so next up, and I will be brief with this. Um, just gonna give a little bit of an update on the Idowile Creek parking situation, because people keep asking about it. Um, so I'm just gonna go through as quickly as I can. So, um, look, as you're aware, there's been a shortage of parking at Idowile for a long time now, really since, I mean, look, the project was, was approved with a large variance. But it didn't really become a problem until the, the population that was living there became more of like a healthy living community and not really the way it was, you know, originally approved back in ninety-six. So, you know, we, we've been working to, you know, address the shortage. You know, last year, Idowile agreed to require that all residents with a garage use the garage for parking rather than storage. Because for a while, they were just not using their garage and taking up, you know, one of the only hundred and seventy spots for two hundred and fifteen units that were available. Um, before that, residents, uh, with garages would park in the general parking area, taking up spots that were intended for the folks that did not have garages. If we look at a history of safety issues, um, in April of twenty-twenty-two, the building inspector received complaints that the parking area had deteriorated to a point that it was unsafe for residents and visitors. Large holes were impassable by residents with limited mobility, could easily damage cars, and led to serious falls and injuries. During an inspection by the building inspector, um, of the complaints about holes in the parking area walkways, he discovered that cars were parked in the roads the fire trucks used to access buildings around the complex. If there was a fire, the cars could block the fire department from reaching residents on the upper levels of the main building. The building inspector ordered Idowile to remedy the safety issues. Idowile did not remedy the safety issues. So after roughly two months of warnings, in June twenty-twenty-two, the town filed an enforcement action in Justice Court to ensure safe parking and reduce fire risks. The town's efforts were successful. Idowile paid a five hundred dollar fine, fixed the parking area and walkways, and it prohibits illegal parking at the complex. And I think it's important to note here, all that parking that was in the fire lanes that was used for years, that was illegal. I mean, that was, and that was at a risk to the residents that lived there. The problem is that Idowile has only a hundred and seventy parking spaces for two hundred and fourteen apartments. Because there was this large variance that was approved in nineteen ninety-six, before it was built. The current owner is aware there is a shortage. The town has asked Idowile to consult with the professional engineers or planners to develop a solution. The town has also invited and continues to invite Idowile to attend a planning board work session to explore solutions. They have yet to take us up on that offer. Um, the town attorney and Idowile attorney are working to move that plan forward. The Idowile attorney should be providing an update to the town attorney this Thursday. So we should have a further update this Thursday. Um, the town wants this to be a win-win situation. Residents get badly needed parking installed in a way that does not create a fire hazard and improves the quality of life. You know, look, the town is offering an open hand to assist Idowile however it can, but we're not gonna compromise on safety. I mean, I don't care how it was in the past. We should have never allowed them to park in fire lanes for decades. That was just a risk. And that's too big a risk, you know, for me to bear. I'm not gonna have the building inspector. I'm not gonna have the town board take on that risk. That is for the property owners to ensure adequate parking. We're supposed to ensure safety. And, you know, our job is to protect, you know, the life, you know, the lives of our residents and to ensure that public safety and the fire department can access the buildings. And so any plan that gets approved or considered has to meet a public safety threshold first. So that's, that's sort of, I think, where we're at with Idowile. I hope to have more information, um, you know, in the days and weeks ahead on this. Um, is there any questions from board members? Okay, so, and lastly, I actually have some, I guess I would consider good news on the golf course update here. So this morning, um, the town engineer and I and the deputy supervisor, we met with Chris Gray, who's the golf course architect and one of the directors of the, of the Golf Foundation. We met on site. And, um, the golf course has, they are bringing in a contractor. They have engaged their engineer for the project who is, um, designing fixes to the issue. The foundation will also be reimbursing. They asked me for where the check should go to reimburse the town for the almost six thousand dollars in expenses that were incurred on December twenty-third. So we will be getting reimbursed for that. But, um, essentially, I let the, our residents know a little earlier tonight. But basically what's gonna happen is this Friday, there's, their contractor team is supposed to come in and they are going to be digging a trench roughly from Hasbrook all the way down to the stream to allow the water that comes down, it ha- it has a way to get out. They're also gonna be putting in a berm that's gonna be designed, that's gonna go behind the trench, that's gonna stop the water from coming on the properties. So this is all going to be, their engineer is designing this. Our engineer is gonna review it and they're gonna get to work starting to do that. Um, we also discovered that there used to be this old drainage pipe, or not old, but there's a drainage pipe coming off of, um, Ridge Road, that they tied that into their drainage system. So all that water that came off Ridge Road, instead of draining into the stream or going elsewhere, ended up into the site that contributed to the flooding. So they're going to separate that out and have the water go back, you know, to where it was going in the past. But obviously, our engineer is gonna be, we're, so, you know, we're making, we're making progress. They have to have a lot of this done by, um, January twenty-fifth, because that's the date when the, when the violation has to be, has to be cured by. So, you know, we're certainly gonna see where they're at. Um, you know, the team's gonna be on site on the twenty-fifth and, um, they're gonna really have to get this done in order for us not to, you know, proceed with enforcement. So we'll be, you know, I'll be keeping you posted. I'm sure you guys are gonna drive by. The whole town's watching this, so. I'll, you know, look, I'll cer- I'll certainly know more towards the end of the week. But I think, I think that's good that they're at least responding and they're gonna fix this and they're gonna reimburse the town. So that's the golf course. Um, let me see, committee reports. Uh, Tim?
Uh, actually, I still have some, basically. Anyway, I did receive a report from our town, basically, he put out a, uh, this resurfacing program for the year of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, it has a series of roads just sort of waiting to see how much give money from trips and stuff, so and so. I received reports from, uh, you know, this, both the first club and sort of, uh, uh, civil, uh, districts, uh, both the BODs and total suspension, uh, lines are well below the, uh, state requirements. Actually, the, the numbers I saw and what I know from wastewater treatment and my past experience, look outstanding. Even with that storm that we had back in December, I'm surprised the numbers are that low. And I spoke to Mike Anderson about, we did down this road and I, I understand he did and why he did it. And the FTM going out was also, you know, during that storm passes, was also well below the state requirements. You know, things are pretty good so far, you know, so, so good so far. Uh, buildings are grounds for nothing to report except that, that during the process of, uh, between time and, uh, AJ on the process of working on that drainage system, that, that pretty seats over that Minns Park, uh, developing a new grade system and, uh, potentially a new drainage, uh, line to, uh, off charge any overflow that's in Minns Park and then water comes with Minns Park in the near future. That's it.
Okay.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have a report this, this round.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Scott?
Oh, so he, Tim, I, um, been waiting for this. The generator was installed in the first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've been waiting for that, so that, that's good news.
That is good news.
And, uh, actually, they, the one in Trolod actually unfortunately failed, but they were able to get another one. So that was.
They, they fixed it.
They fixed it, but, uh, wow, you know, we now know how input they are. Um, the only things I have to report is, um, the mainstream purification committee, we met on January ninth. We reviewed some of the goals. Um, we looked at some budgets. So they're gonna be sending a letter to, um, us with some requests because we do have to plant things again. So, um, the other thing is the senior advisory committee, they're meeting on the twenty-third. Uh, on Saturday, I met with group, uh, from, uh, New York Military Academy and the cadets actually helped sort, um, all the food donations that we, um, had collected. And, uh, they have actually bagged, uh, care packages, uh, for our senior residents. Um, our seniors on the advisory committee are distributing, um, uh, basically checklist of items like getting other seniors to sign up for it and, um, we will be working to, uh, deliver them to their homes, especially during the winter months. And then again, I think, I didn't say, the meeting on the twenty-third at one o'clock. And, um, we're gonna set the schedule for the year and, uh, hopefully get more members. And I think that's it.
Okay.
Uh, the building department for the month of.
The building department for the month of December issued 27 permits, 19 certificates of compliance were issued, six certificates of occupancy were issued. They did 55 onsite inspections, two complaints were investigated, one fire inspection was performed, two signs were removed. They took in $15,139 in permit fees and $5,200 for municipal searches, 13 of them. $200 was taken in for renewal of permits. The new planning board projects opened were three of the 15 to date. That's all I have. To expand, Highway Department report, the assisted sanitation with yard waste, holiday double pickups and callouts, street sweeping of leaves off the side of roads, townwide, ready skid tires for snow removal of sidewalks and bring to buildings and ground shop, ready wall plow trucks and equipment for upcoming storm, plow and salt roads and sidewalks for snow ice storms on December 11th, 12th, 13th, 19th, 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th. They washed all trucks after snow and ice events. They managed flooding across town from the December 23 rainstorm. We received over three and a half inches of rain. They repaired catch basins on Rabbit Road that was damaged from the flooding event, raised catch basins on Mailer Avenue at the blacktop thing, placed blacktop berm on a proportion of Mailer for water runoff. They installed catch basin and pipe at 84 Mailer Avenue. They trimmed brush in Mountainville area, old Route 94 neighborhood and Beaver Dam, cut down trees at Dog Park, building his grounds. We have been organizing all highway garages and sheds. They welded grates back together. They worked, truck five one, work on pond drainage issue pipe and basin clog with sift. And mechanic worked on the 2010 loader, 2010 packer, winterized and put away street sweeper, serviced the 2010 F-350, 2005 wing plow truck battery master switch replacement, and some wing plow trucks for service and repair. Tom took long enough to write this, probably a day to write that report.
They're busy.
I recorded this morning, October, 29th, after I stepped.
So, okay, so let me do, I'll do New Windsor, New Windsor EMS first. So there was a, they basically took over June of 2022, so June 2022 through December of 2022, basically six months, I would say, of success. They've been able to maintain 100% coverage of the communities that they serve, which is New Windsor and Cornwall. Just some highlights from the last six months. They cleaned out the entire building, kitchens redone, new kitchen appliances, new blinds, new landscaping, a new sign, heat and AC repaired, flooring redone, an office and lounge, new outside lights. Much of this was donated, was in kind. Some of it was funding that we had left over from the transfer between Covac and New Windsor, Cornwall EMS, but a lot of this work had to be redone to make the place happen, because it was just a disaster the way it was left. Operational administrative, 100% of the calls recovered. The average response time is seven point, seven minutes and 11 seconds. They now have two ambulants, you may have noticed they have two now.
Actually, they have three.
Oh, sorry, three, yeah. Drive cameras installed on the ambulances. They did get their CON approval from the Hudson Valley Regional EMS Council.
Certification.
Yeah. There is, I believe, another week or two left where other providers could raise objections, but my understanding is none have been raised yet. And once we get through this next week or so, they'll have their CON for Cornwall. It'll be, it'll be official, no more temporary CON, which is good. They've held NRCAN and community CPR classes. Let me see, they've appointed a resident to the board. Karen Reyes Edelman has been appointed to the board. You know, she's Cornwall's appointee, we're working on another appointee from the town of Lynch. Areas that still need to be addressed, just some minor stuff in the building that, you know, the town's going to look at, seeing if the building department can take care, buildings and grounds can take care of some of these over the next year or so. But overall, I think it's been a good six months. I mean, I, you know, I don't think you could, you know, say that, I mean, I think we're getting, you know, our money's worth for this. I think we're getting the best service, you know, in my mind in Orange County in terms of EMS. And I, you know, I'm very happy that we did this, you know, earlier in 2022. So next up, we have the Town of Cornwall Police Department memorandum. So calls for service in December, 630 miles driven, 6,032. Total miles for the year, 85,936. Traffic and appearance tickets issued, 25. Parking tickets issued, four. Motor vehicle accidents reported, 64. Arrest made, three. Alarm calls, 30. Ambulance request, nine. Animal complaints, six. Criminal mischief, four. Disabled vehicles, nine. Domestic incidents, five. Parking complaints, two. Suspicious persons or vehicles, four. House checks, 12. Assist other agencies, 21. Obviously, the really big thing here that's not in this report is that, as you're aware, chief hazard retiring on, what is it, February 24th? And the town board, we have pulled the list, the local list, from the county, and the town board's going to be conducting interviews of several, you know, candidates that are on the list in the next week or so. And we'll be looking to make a decision and to get that candidate in place before the chief, or at least appointed effective the date that the chief, because you can't actually appoint him before, you got to appoint him effective like his last day or something. So that's, that's what we're going to be looking to do, probably the most, one of the most important things we've got to do this, this month, is get that taken care of. Is there anything else from the board? No? Okay. Is there any public comment?
One thing, Josh, just the grant for the engineering for the hazard cavity drainage, where the town got that, I know it's been a while coming. But I think, I heard you say that the town's matching fund is going to come from the ARCA funds. The town may want to check to see, because unless something has changed, I don't think you can use federal funds as a match for a federal grant, and the ARCA funds are federal. So maybe there's a change, maybe you can do it, but I would just check on that, because I think that's always been the rule.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comments? No? Okay. Can I make a motion to go into closed session to seek the advice of council?
Soon. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Deputy Supervisor, just for the record, this is a closed session, as I understand it, discuss zoning issues.
Yes, as well as, there are a few other matters on here as well. You want me to just name them?
No, no, that's fine. But in connection with the zoning issues, the town's consulting planner is in attendance. She's been waiting.
I know.
So my suggestion would be that the record reflects that she's being invited into a closed session, because this is an attorney-client session, and the board can invite others in to have a discussion regarding attorney-client issues. It's certainly appropriate, but make sure that the record reflects that, that she's being invited into attending the attorney-client session.
Yes, and I would also, you know, invite the deputy supervisor into attorney-client as well. If I could get a motion to go into closed session to seek the advice of council?
Soon.
You actually already did, and they.
Oh, I did, yes, sorry.
They voted on it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was just making a clarification to make sure that the record is accurate. Thank you.
Okay.
No, sir.
Nope.